Good morning. I think most everyone here knows who I am. I would hope so. Yay. Yeah, I'll be back tomorrow morning too. But Pastor Becky here, and I am just welcoming all of you to this time of information with our District Superintendent, Reverend Dr. Joseph Archie. How we're gonna run today is I'm gonna welcome him up, we're gonna pray in, and he is gonna go through a set of slides that will be shown. Those slides, we will be sending out to the congregation, probably on Monday when someone gets in the office, because they do it better than I do. We will send them out to anyone who's got an email, so their slides will be available. We'll also run some hard copies for people who do not, you know, have the tech or don't want to look at it that way or have it that way. So just give us a chance to make that happen. It may not happen today, but we'll turn it around as quick as we can, so you have that information in your hands. Also, while he is going through the PowerPoint, if you have this burning question that comes up, please jot it down, because it may get answered a couple of slides later. So we're gonna ask all questions to be held until after the complete PowerPoint presentation's been done, and then we will invite people to come up to these microphones, because you know I can't run fast enough around here with a microphone. There's too much lag time. This is not being livestreamed today. We know there's been a lot of this information, some of you've already heard. So in that respect, and also because we're a little light on our tech, we are not livestreaming this today, but the PowerPoint will be available to anybody who wants to see it. Okay? Any questions? Reverend Archie, if I could ask you to come up, and we're gonna pray over you and pray in this session of information for today, if the rest of you would pray with me. Lord God, we thank you for this day that you have made, and we rejoice in it. We rejoice that we are your children, we rejoice that you bring us together to have holy conversation. Lord, you tell us to seek you for wisdom, and that's what we're doing. Lord, we just ask for your hand to be upon Reverend Archie as he speaks to us and to other churches, as he is your faithful servant, and that he is the light of Christ that helps us as we are going through this new time, this new normal. Father, give us kind hearts, kind words, hearts of compassion and discernment, but Lord, above all, may we never stop loving you and loving others as you command us and as you give us the opportunity. So Father, be with us in this place, open our hearts and minds to receive from you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Am I on? Can you hear me? All right. Thank you, Dr. Becky Collison, pastor of the church. Grace and peace to each of you, and thank you for being here on today. This is the first of three official meetings that needs to take place for a church to go through the discernment process for disaffiliating from the United Methodist Church. Because you're in the process doesn't necessarily mean you will disaffiliate. That will be both the choice of this church at a church conference, and then the annual conference would have to approve that disaffiliation as well. I'll get into the details of that. But there has to be three meetings, according to our Conference Board of Trustees, that are part of the discernment process. This is number one. We call this the information meeting. And I know I've spoken with you before, you have lots of other conversations, but this is the official information meeting, so it is meeting number one. The second meeting that takes place after you have studied a book called Living Faithfully as a four-week study offered by the church, will be a forum meeting. And that meeting, you all have gotten letters from my office letting you know that this meeting will take place. You'll get a second letter when it's time to have the forum meeting, all right? And then in that forum, any questions that you might have after having the book study will be entertained at that point in time. The third meeting, you'll get another letter from my office saying, "It's time to have the church conference," if you continue on to that point. And in the church conference, that's when you will vote by written ballot whether to, you'll take a vote on whether you want to stay in the United Methodist Church or whether you want to disaffiliate from the United Methodist Church in that third meeting. In order for you to continue forward in the disaffiliation process, you will have to get a two-thirds vote of the professing members present at that church conference for you to continue on. Then the annual conference will have to vote as a simple majority to allow this local church to disaffiliate, if you've gotten that far in the process. Let me go through it. Again, hold all questions. I want to present the whole thing to you. Like Dr. Collison said, this is available to you, it'll be sent out to you, you'll have it in your email. There'll be some hard copies made available, but I'll go through the whole thing, and then I'll open it up, we'll have comments, we'll have questions, we'll have discussion. All right, so how did we get here? The debate over human sexuality in the United Methodist Church has been happening for a long time. You'll remember, many of you know, we became a denomination in 1968 when the Methodist Episcopal Church and the Evangelical United Brethren Church came together. We became the United Methodist Church, sixty-eight. So almost since the beginning of this new denomination, at every general conference, there's been some discussion about our language in the discipline or something having to do with issues and matters related to human sexuality, particularly homosexuality. Proposals to change the current language and stance of the Book of Discipline have been voted down continually since that time. So in every annual conference since nearly the beginning of our denomination, there has been some proposal to change the language in the discipline, and some, and it's been voted down, when folks have said, "We want to erase the language in the discipline" or "alter the language in the discipline." So the debate rages on still, and as you all know well, society's understanding, if you will, it's changed over time around human sexuality as a whole, in general. It's more accepted. You can get married as two men, you can get married as two women in our society now. In other places in the world, that's the case as well, not everywhere. This debate in the church, in the United Methodist Church, hit a fever pitch in the 2016 General Conference, and especially during the special call General Conference of 2019. So you know our General Conference happens every four years, and so it happens on those even-numbered years. So 2016, the next one would have been 2020, 2024, and the normal cycle. 2019, there was a special called session of General Conference, and the bishops were asked by the General Conference, they were asked before that, to come up with a plan to deal with this impasse within our denomination, to deal with different thoughts on sexuality. Next slide, please. So our current language in the discipline, this is still in the discipline. If anybody tells you our discipline has changed, that's not true. It has not. This is still what it says. Paragraph 161G, "The United Methodist Church does not condone the practice of homosexuality and considers this practice incompatible with Christian teaching." And paragraphs 341.6 and 304.3 state that our clergy are not allowed to officiate at same-sex weddings or ceremonies, and someone who identifies as a self-avowed practicing homosexual cannot be licensed for ministry or ordained as a minister in our denomination. Next slide. So again, back to the special called session of General Conference. It took place in 2019. There were several proposals that were put forth. One was called the One Church Plan. The bishops as a whole favored this plan. Doesn't mean every bishop as an individual was for it, but as a whole, the Council of Bishops put forth a plan called the One Church Plan. This would have allowed for churches, individual local churches and individual clergy, to make their own decisions on whether they would officiate at same-sex ceremonies and weddings, and annual conferences could make decisions about whether they would ordain or license self-avowed practicing homosexual persons for ministry. That plan, the One Church Plan, that was put forth, that would have allowed what I call plurality within the denomination, did not pass. The One Church Plan did not pass. Another plan that was put forth was called the Traditional Plan. This would have kept the current language in the discipline, those paragraphs that we just went over in the last slide, and also increased accountability for clergy who breached the current language of the discipline. So increased accountability or punishment, if you will, for those who broke the rules. All right? Next slide. So the Traditional Plan passed, and that's the current language that we're under, which upholds the current language in the discipline, and at least officially increases the accountability for those who would break the rules of the discipline. Also, at that same conference, the Taylor Disaffiliation Plan was passed. This was a plan that allowed, for conscience sake, churches to leave the United Methodist Church and disaffiliate. So, two reasons that you could disaffiliate. You could disaffiliate because you don't like the current language in the discipline. Let's say you're a progressive congregation, you're progressive in your theology. Some have decided that they want to leave because they believe that the current language in the discipline is unjust towards the LGBTQIA+ community, and they believe that it is discriminatory against those persons. And so you can decide to leave the denomination. Maybe you're, again, a progressive congregation that wants to leave for that reason. The Taylor Disaffiliation Plan also allows churches to leave because you are dissatisfied that the discipline isn't being followed. Because there are bishops who are, and boards of ordained ministry, who are ordaining persons who have said, "I'm self-avowed and practicing." And there are clergy who have officiated at same-sex weddings and ceremonies, and they have not been brought up to trial. There are some bishops who've said they won't even entertain trials for those who are brought up on charges for breaking the discipline in that particular manner. One of the reasons the bishops have said that they won't entertain charges, and think about this, this happened in 2019 when they were making these decisions, was, one, they said, "It's costly." It takes money to take someone through church trial, because they've broken the rules. Second, it's a major distraction. And third, it just keeps bishops away from leading churches and denominations in making disciples of Jesus Christ for the transformation of the world. It takes a lot of energy and time away from what bishops otherwise would be doing in their leadership roles. And so keep in mind, these bishops were making these decisions back in 2019, and they were saying, "Let's hold off on all these charges, let's hold off on all these trials, let's just stop that right now," because they thought at the time that we were going to have a general conference in which we were going to probably iron out and make some major decisions about the denomination, including perhaps a split in the denomination in the official sense anyway, a year later. They thought we were going to have a general conference in 2020. That was before the pandemic. No one could predict that we were going to have a global pandemic that prevented us from meeting the way we normally had met every four years. And so no one was thinking about that, so that's part of the reasons why bishops were like, "Let's hold off on all these charges, let's get to our general conference next year, and let's go from there." So, the Taylor Disaffiliation Plan, again, allows churches to leave for two reasons. You can leave because you don't like the current language in the discipline, or you can leave because you're dissatisfied that conference or denominational officials have broken rules around the discipline in this matter in particular. So again, there are some conferences who are not enforcing the current discipline, and so churches can disaffiliate for that reason. Until the next General Conference, many annual conferences were holding the issues in abeyance, meaning postponement of any trial action. Next slide. So again, the next General Conference was supposed to take place in 2020. The worldwide pandemic caused the postponement of that conference until 2022, when the Commission on General Conference met in 2022. They said, "We still can't properly meet. There are too many people in Africa and the Philippines and Eastern Europe, all part of the United Methodist Church, who won't be able to get to Minneapolis." The meeting was in Minneapolis, Minnesota. They can't get visas in this COVID situation. And so if we had had a General Conference, it would have been an unfair General Conference, because many of our folks from overseas would not have been able to be there and give voice and vote to whatever was going to take place and whatever resolutions happened. So one of the proposals, no, so let me go back, I got ahead of myself. So it was postponed to 2022 originally, and then again postponed to 2024. So we're scheduled to have a General Conference in North Carolina in 2024. That's where we are right now. We haven't had a regular session of General Conference since 2016, all right? So one of the proposals that was going to come before General Conference was what's called the Protocol of Reconciliation and Grace Through Separation. I know that's a mouthful, right? So it's been called the Protocol for short. This would have allowed a separation to take place in the United Methodist Church. Congregations could live out their identities. An agreement would be made to support all clergy pensions and benefits for both denominations. This was allowed a split. It would have allowed, if it got passed, a new theologically conservative denomination to split from the United Methodist Church. The remaining post-separation United Methodist Church would continue, and it would erase the language in the discipline and allow a plurality in that denomination, all right? The postponement frustrated many, and those who are in the Wesleyan Covenant Association, which is a theologically conservative caucus group, and others chose to launch the new denomination called the Global Methodist Church. That launched in May of 2022, so it's a brand-new denomination that launched May of last year, so it's not yet a year old, all right? The United Methodist Church has not formally separated and cannot do so until legislation is passed to facilitate such a split at a General Conference in 2024. There's no guarantee that any such legislation will be passed. So that's important, because if folks say, "Well, the United Methodist Church is split," well, not technically. A new denomination has formed, and many United Methodists were key leaders in forming this new denomination called the Global Methodist Church. But there is no agreement between the United Methodist Church and the Global Methodist Church. So there is no formal split. A split can't happen, according to our church rules, unless you make those kinds of decisions at a General Conference. Again, we haven't had a General Conference since 2016 in the regular sense, and 2019 was the special called session of General Conference. Congregations can continue to disaffiliate from the United Methodist Church through the Taylor Disaffiliation Plan until December 31, 2023. The Taylor Disaffiliation Plan has a window. That window closes at the end of this year. And so if a local church wants to disaffiliate, it has to work in cooperation with its Conference Board of Trustees, District Superintendent, and then, of course, get an annual conference vote, and that has to happen before the end of this year. Next slide. Congregations who do not wish to remain can vote to disaffiliate under this Taylor Disaffiliation Plan, and you become an independent congregation. The independent congregation could then decide to join the Global Methodist Church. It could join some other denomination, or it could remain an independent church. But to be clear, if you go through the process of disaffiliation, you get a two-thirds vote at your church conference, the annual conference votes at a simple majority, and you pay the fee to get out, that makes you independent. It does not automatically put you in the Global Methodist Church. It makes you an independent congregation. You could then join the Global Methodist Church, you could join some other Christian denomination, or you could remain an independent body. To disaffiliate, the church must undergo a discernment process of at least two months. That includes a viewing of Stay or Go, Real Talk for United Methodists Exploring Their Future. That's a webinar, and that's available on our conference website. It's at www.penn-dell.org. That's our conference website. So you have to view that webinar as a congregation. It has to be made available for you to view. A four-week study of the book, Living Faithfully, and I think I saw copies out there. I think I got a copy here, in case you haven't seen what it looks like. What happened to the book there? It's all right. Just want to hold it up, in case you haven't seen it, this is what the book looks like. It's a green cover. This is the revised and updated version. This is written by four persons. They're United Methodists. One's a freelance writer, three of them are ordained clergy in the United Methodist Church. And this book is written, not to change anybody's mind, one way or the other, but to take this presenting issue and present both sides, if you will. You know, certain people approach this with one way of understanding human sexuality around homosexuality in particular. Others have another approach, and it's presenting both approaches. So that you can, not that you have to agree with the other approach, but that you might understand how the other side reasons, if you will, all right? You don't have to agree with it, but it's a way of studying and saying, "These persons come to this conclusion, and this is how they reason. And these persons came to this conclusion, and this is how they reason," all right? So that's what it's intended to do. So that's the second step. After reading this book as a four-week study, it has to be offered. The question, I know it comes up at every meeting like this, how many persons or what percentage of the persons in the congregation have to be a part of the study? The Conference Board of Trustees did not say. The study has to be offered, and my hope is that as many people as possible would take part of the study. It's an important issue in our society today, and we should be studying this so that we can speak to it. So again, but there's nothing that says fifty percent of your congregation needs to be part of the study, or so many numbers of persons need to be a part of the study. But the study does have to be offered, all right? It's a four-week study. After the four-week study, you'll get a letter again from my office saying, "It's time to meet again for the open forum." There's no quota on how many people need to come to the open forum. Again, I hope that you all will be a part of it, so that you understand what's going on, and you can reason with one another and talk through where your congregation might end up. So that's meeting number two, the open forum. I'll come back, and we'll discuss anything that you want to discuss. We'll talk theology around what you've studied in this book, all right? No vote to disaffiliate may take place prior to the conclusion of the discernment process. So this is the second step in that discernment process. After that process is completed, you have a church conference scheduled by the DS, and you take a vote to disaffiliate. and you take a vote to disaffiliate. There will be a church officer who would make a motion to disaffiliate from the United Methodist Church. Another church officer would second that. And then we will open it up for any discussion. When I'm satisfied that all the discussion has been held, and folks have said whatever you want to say, ask any questions you want to ask, then I would ask for the paper ballots to be distributed. All right? Only professing members of the church get the vote. If you're not a professing member of the church, you're a regular attender, you're still welcome to come to the meeting, still welcome to give voice, but you cannot vote. Professing members also include young people who have gone through confirmation. If you've gone through confirmation, you are now a professing member of the church. And so those persons get a vote as well. There are no proxy votes. There are no write-in votes. You have to be present, and you have to vote by written ballot. You also get two persons. The church is responsible for getting two persons who are not members of Mariners Bethel to be the ones who will count the votes. Two persons. They could be members of some other United Methodist Church. They could be members of the Baptist Church. They could be atheists. Doesn't matter. Two persons who are not members of this church, you will secure those two persons to count the ballots on that day. Those persons would then report to me the results of the ballots. And then I will announce, right there in the meeting, the results of the ballot. If you get a two-thirds vote, at least a two-thirds vote of the professing members present, then you will continue on in the process of disaffiliation. If you do not get a two-thirds vote, that ends the process of disaffiliation right then and there, and you remain United Methodist. All right? So I think I've explained that. That's on this next slide. To continue the process, you got to get a two-thirds vote of professing members present at the church conference. Also, the church must pay any unpaid apportionments for the 12 months immediately prior to disaffiliation, and an additional 12 months of apportionments as calculated by the annual conference and other costs outlined in the disaffiliation agreement. That agreement, the whole legal document is available on our conference website also. If you click on the tab where it says, I think it says, United Methodist Discerning Their Future, something to that effect. And it will take you to the disaffiliation agreement, which I'm explaining here to you, and the actual document, the legal document. Because what happens is, once you disaffiliate, you go through the whole process, then the conference board of trustees signs over the property to the new independent congregation, whatever your, the name of your new independent religious organization is. So property transfer takes place. All right? So in this conference, the local church shall have the right to retain its real and personal, tangible and intangible property. After paying 50% of the real property fair market value, all records and United Methodist intellectual property must also be surrendered. Copies can be kept of records. The disaffiliation agreement has to go through the local church, voted on and passed by a simple majority of the members present and voting at this next session of annual conference, which takes place in June. All right? Next. On the 18th of October, the conference board of trustees changed the policy to allow any church that had notified its district superintendent that it wanted to start the process of disaffiliation before July the first to be allowed to disaffiliate under the 2020 requirements, grandfathered in, if you will. And the church will not have to pay half of the value of building and property as a part of the disaffiliation agreement. This church did send a letter in to me before July the first of 2022. And so if you do go all the way through the disaffiliation process, you will not be assessed a value of 50% on the building and property as part of the disaffiliation agreement. All right? Any church that didn't send a letter in or notified the DS after July 1st still has to go with the updated policy, which means they will have to pay half of the value in building and property as part of the disaffiliation agreement. Next slide. So what does this all mean? At this point, the current traditional stance remains. That stance cannot change until general conference if, that's a conditional word, if new legislation passes. If the stance changes, churches and clergy in the UMC will not be forced to officiate at same-sex unions or weddings, and they will not have to take a self-avowed practicing homosexual clergy person under appointment as pastor at their church. Let me stop right there. That's important. There are leaders in the United Methodist Church who have made it clear that they want the denomination to be a big tent denomination, which meant by big tent. They want theologically progressive, centrist, and traditionalist to be able to live under one roof. And so going back to the one-church plan, this idea that you could have a church that is fine with a gay pastor, a church that is fine with gay weddings, and another church up the street, still in the same denomination, who is not fine with it. So there will be a plurality within the same denomination. There is not a thought that anyone's going to be forced to do anything against their conscience. Even right now, if you think about it with weddings, no one forces your pastor to officiate at any heterosexual weddings. The pastor meets with a couple, right? A man and woman says, Pastor, we want to get married. And if Pastor Becky meets with them in the counseling session, and she determines that they're not ready to get married. They don't seem to have the proper love toward each other. They're getting married for the wrong reasons. They're spiritually immature. She can decide, I'm not officiating at your wedding. Sorry, you're not ready. She can make that decision now. Nobody from the denomination, not the DS, not the bishop, forces her to officiate at such wedding. The same will take place in a post-separation United Methodist Church if the language of the discipline is erased. No one's going to be forced to do any weddings, hetero or homosexual, that a pastor does not want to do. Also, this is important, and I think I've shared this with you before. Whenever a pastoral appointment change is going to take place, the district superintendent meets with the staff parish relations committee. And one of the questions that's going to be asked is, what's the general tenor of the local church as far as theology? If this church, or any church, identifies as theologically traditionalist, you're not going to be appointed a theological, theologically progressive pastor that wants to do gay, that wants to officiate at gay weddings. We're not trying to set churches up to have that kind of conflict. It's important to say, because I know there's a fear out there that we're going to get a pastor that we don't want, that brings a theology that we don't want. That's not what leaders in the United Methodist Church are trying to do. What they are trying to do is open up the denomination to allow differences of thought and differences of practice around the presenting issue. So the issues at hand are bigger than sexuality. Differences in the UMC and GMC, Global Methodist Church, also includes some church government differences. In the United Methodist Church, we have what's called the trust clause. That means the property is held in trust by the local church on behalf of the ministry of the entire denomination. So in short, the local church doesn't own the property. In the Global Methodist Church, they won't have a trust clause. So in the Global Methodist Church, the local church owns the property. It's not held in trust for the benefit of the entire denomination. So that's one difference. Bishops will have term limits in the Global Methodist Church also. That's not currently the case. If you get elected to be a bishop in the United Methodist Church, of course, as an elder, you have to retire at 74 years of age, 72 years of age. But you could get elected at 40 years old and serve for decades as a bishop. That's not the case in the Global Methodist Church. The way they're setting up their denomination, they will have bishops, but those bishops will have term limits. There are some other things that you can go to the Global Methodist Church's website and webpage and find out some of the other distinctives about the Global Methodist Church. They are going to be Methodist, though. They're still going to have Methodist Wesleyan theology. They'll still see John and Charles Wesley as their theological fathers, if you will. And they'll be Methodist in the way that they're organized and connected. But in some very appreciable ways, they will be different from the United Methodist Church. If you become independent, there are some things you have to seriously consider. How would you, how will you determine your pastoral leadership? If you're in the United Methodist Church, or even the Global Methodist Church, you know that your bishops are going to make pastoral appointments. If you're independent, it's up to you to decide how you call your pastors or how you determine who becomes a pastor for your church. Your form of church government also. Right now, you know you're under the discipline. You follow the discipline. You have certain mandated committees, SBRC, finance, staff parish relations committee, nominations committee. You understand what church government is like in the United Methodist Church. It'll be in many ways similar in the Global Methodist Church. If you become independent, you decide for yourself what your form of church government looks like. That's something you have to consider. How will you relate to other churches? Right now, you know that you're part of the United Methodist Church. You pay apportionments that help to fund the ministries of the regional body, the annual conference, and the global church. All right? And also, you relate to other churches in a connectional system. All right? For example, some of you, you've experienced cluster charge conferences. If you become independent, you decide for yourself. What does that look like? How do you connect to other churches? How do you support missions that are greater than what you can do yourself? Those will be your decisions to make as an independent church. Another thing to be concerned about, I think sometimes churches don't necessarily properly consider, is when you become independent, how do you prevent certain individuals who might have, how do I say, dictatorial qualities from taking over? What checks and balances do you have on leadership to prevent one man or one woman rule? I'm assuming you don't want that. No matter what kind of church government you're in, or whether you're independent, you probably want the body to be able to help make certain decisions. I say that because I know of a particular church. This was a church in the AUMP Church, African Union Methodist Protestant Church, which is a Methodist body, a black denomination. My mom grew up in that denomination. There was a certain church that she was a member of, and my family, for generations, worshipped there and were members. They wanted to get out of the conference. Again, very similar setup to us. They're Methodist. They couldn't wait to leave the conference. They left the conference. They got what they wanted. And a certain person took over, and at least to many, they feel that this certain bishop, calls himself bishop, took over. And he calls all the shots. You don't like it? There's the door. You have to think about that. I'm not saying that necessarily would happen to every church that becomes independent, but it is something to consider. If you don't properly set up your church government and follow it, you have no checks or balances. You can't go to the DS and say, hey, can you get this person out of here? They're, you know, trying to run everything themselves. You don't have a bishop. You don't have a discipline. You don't have those things. So that's something to be considered. In some churches, the divide over the interpretation of Scripture and the practice of Christian living may be so divisive that the local church will split, and in some cases, be seriously damaged in its witness, in its vitality, and its financial viability. Now, again, you know the tenor of your church, but in some churches in the United Methodist Church, folks are passionate on both sides of this issue. And no matter whether the church decides to stay or go, they're going to lose some people. And when they leave, they're going to take their money with them, and that's going to hurt the financial viability of the church. It also hurts the witness of the church in the community, the infighting, right? And it hurts relationships. I know it has hurt already amongst the clergy of this annual conference. Every clergy person will tell you, it has hurt our relationships with each other because folks have taken sides. That's the best way I can describe it. And it causes division. Next. The Global Methodist Church has, you see the hyperlink there where you can go to and find out information about that church? It has not had a convening conference yet. It's a brand-new denomination, but they do have some outlines of what their denomination will look like and what's important to them. And so you can go to their website and find out more information about that. I'm not an expert on the Global Methodist Church, but I know you did have persons who come in and talk to you. This church has done its homework more than any church I know. You've had lots of folk in to talk about various, you know, what it means to be United Methodist, what it means to be Global Methodist, what would it mean to be an independent church? You've had lots and lots of discussion about this. I think that's good. This is a big decision, and you have discerned well. You haven't jumped quickly into a decision one way or the other. You really wrestled with this. You really had lots of discussion. You've had lots of different viewpoints on this thing. Next. The Global Methodist Church was birthed by the WCA. The WCA, using its own words, said that it was the midwife birthing this new denomination. All right? And so there were United Methodist Church leaders, some associated and some not associated or even supportive of the WCA, that helped to put together this independent transitional council of the Global Methodist Church and help make adjustments to their proposed Book of Doctrines and Disciplines. And again, that's online. They do have a discipline. It's a book of doctrine and discipline, what they call it. So you can take a look at what their rules and what their theology is going to look like in there. Next. And finally, a scripture. Don't be anxious over anything, but in every situation, by prayer and petition, with thanksgiving, present your request to God. And the peace of God, which transcends all understanding, will guard your hearts and minds in Christ Jesus. So again, this is a very important decision to make. It affects the future of our churches for years and generations to come. So approach it with much prayer and discernment. Like I said, I've commanded you already. You've already discerned a lot on this issue. You've prayed much, I'm sure, on the issue. And finally, also, as Pastor Becky has said as well, let's be gracious and loving towards those whose thoughts differ from our own. Amen? Amen. All right, that's the end of the PowerPoint presentation. Thank you for listening. I want to open it up now for any questions, comments, or concerns that you may have, also any clarifications. And we want you to come to the mic. There's one on either side.
Hello. Hello, fellow Methodists and Mariners people. My name is Clayton Brown. My wife, Barbara Sue. First and foremost, Reverend Archie, I want to thank you for your wonderful, clear delivery, your presentation. It was very informative, and I just thank you and God bless you.
Thank you, and God bless you.
I'm not offering a position. My wife and I are not here today to talk about which way we would go as far as making a decision on this huge issue. Our concern is this. We have made plans to be away from the area for the next three months. We're going to be in Florida. My wife and I have been active members of this congregation for many years, both in our tithing and our involvement in different ministries here. And the fact that we're not going to be here in March to physically vote on this major issue is of great concern to us. I mean, we're talking here about changing the language in the Book of Discipline that's going to decide which way our congregation's going to go, major things like this. And yet, our understanding is that if we're not here physically on that day to cast our written vote, well, that we don't have any to cast our written vote, well, that we don't have any other opportunity. We have, and to me, this is unfair. A major issue of this nature, we should at least be able to have a write-in vote or delegate someone to vote in our behalf, a proxy. We're changing the language in the Book of Discipline, possibly. And yet, we're being told that the Book of Discipline says we must be here physically on that date, or we don't get to vote one way or the other. I think this is prejudicial. I think it's slanted. It's not giving us or anyone else here the opportunity to vote if we can't, on that day, be physically here. And I'm requesting that whatever you have in your authority to make a change in that, to allow us to give our vote. I would certainly appreciate you taking that advisement.
Thank you for sharing. Let me be clear. Only the General Conference can change the language in the Book of Discipline. So that happens at the general church level, when we ever get to having a General Conference again. The rules about disaffiliation were set up by both the General Conference, and they gave certain discretion to Conference Boards of Trustees. And our particular Conference Board of Trustees of the Peninsula Delaware Conference put forth these particular rules about how disaffiliation happens. And so it is not up to me to decide. I'm the one who is charged with administrating the process, but I don't get to make any determination about whether, you know, the details of the church conference. So that's not up to me. So I don't know how else to answer that. I understand how you might feel that it's unfair that you can't vote by proxy or vote by some other way other than being physically present on that day. But those are the rules that were set up by our Conference Board of Trustees.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Barnes. Thanks for presenting this today. I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
I actually have a follow-up because I was going to ask this question. I was recently, and I think you kind of answered it, but I want to make sure I understand. Recently, someone told me that their parents do belong here, but they're in Florida, like a lot of people that live around here. And I just want to make sure I understand. You said the conference comes up with the rules because they told their son, who's also a member here, that they, in Florida, they belong to another Methodist church, or they attend. And they were allowed to vote by proxy and could write in. It did not have to be present at the time. So you're saying that all conferences have different rules?
Yes. The General Conference that voted on the Taylor Disaffiliation Plan gave individual annual conferences leeway to decide certain things. And so our annual conference has put together that decision that those who are not present and voting by written ballot would not have a vote that counts.
Okay, so that's our conference. And then, our vote, I think they said, was like March? Is that right? Okay.
Is that, I don't have my calendar.
But we don't have to, according to your slide, we have till the end of this year.
Well, you have till the end of the year to complete the total process.
Oh, I got you, okay. And then my other question was, you know, the delaying from the United Methodist Church in meeting for, you know, where you said the pandemic affected everything and it was unfair. We couldn't get places, you know, other countries to meet, and it just, it didn't work. So I kind of have a problem with, okay, they're not meeting till 2024. And this is a huge decision on how they're going to, the path they're taking. But they're making us, all these churches, decide before they've even met and told us which direction they're going. How are we supposed to make a decision, not even knowing that they haven't met? They haven't decided their path. Why do we know that we want to disaffiliate when we don't know which direction they're exactly going? Like it's like, you know, putting the cart before the horse kind of thing, I feel like.
Well, that's a great question, and I'm so glad you raised that. When the Taylor Disaffiliation Plan went into effect, when it was put into our discipline, paragraph 2553 it is, it happened in 2019, when the general church thought we were going to meet a year later. And so it was thinking, okay, we're going to make a decision next year, 2020. That's still going to give people plenty of time, because it doesn't end till 2023, to decide after the General Conference has made its decision. What happened is the pandemic forced us not to be able to have a General Conference.
Right.
And then it was postponed yet again. And so originally, when it was set up, this Taylor Disaffiliation Plan, it did make sense because you would have known how the General Conference voted in 2020. And then you can say, all right, we want to leave or we want to stay. But since the pandemic ruined the plans, if you will, now it looks like it's unfair and backwards, you see? But it wasn't originally set up that way. However, we can't change what we put in place in 2019 because it was a General Conference rule. And the only way to be able to change something that General Conference put in place is to have another General Conference, and that's not going to happen. So I hope that helps you understand why we're in the position we're in.
I just think it's a mess.
It is, I agree.
It's a mess. I feel like they want us to make a decision without the information of what path they're going on.
That's right.
And it's so unfair. I mean, it's a huge decision.
Because the disaffiliation plan wasn't supposed to be the way, in the minds of many, we separated. That was put into place, and the thought was, a few congregations are probably going to take that opportunity to disaffiliate that way. But most congregations are going to wait until we have a General Conference, especially because this protocol was being supported by theologically progressive, centrist, and traditionalists, you know, somebody in every camp saying, hey, look, we all think that this is a good plan. Let's all support this together.
Well, and then the main reason that a lot of churches will do it is because of the assets, correct? Like, that's the big difference. If you wait versus if you do the disaffiliation process, it's a lot different money-wise, correct? I mean...
Well, yeah, there are some differences, but part of it is an uncertainty. There are a lot of churches who say, hmm, all right, we don't know what's going to happen in 2024. None of us do, right? None of us can predict the future. So we don't know that some protocol or some version of the protocol will pass that allow churches to go various ways according to their conscience. And so that's why a lot of churches are looking at the disaffiliation plan because the local church wants to have a little more control, as much as it can, over what their future will be.
Okay. But they could ultimately meet and say, we're sticking the way we've always been. I mean, that could happen. We could disaffiliate, and then we could find out that they're staying the way they are now.
That's right. That's right. You're welcome. And some churches, I've had one church in this district that went all, they went all the way through to the church conference part of the process. This was a smaller congregation. And they didn't even get a 50% vote, let alone two-thirds. They, I think there were 12 yes votes to disaffiliate and 19 no votes. And for me, I had no idea because some of the folks who wanted to disaffiliate, they were the more vocal ones. And the ones who didn't want to disaffiliate were quiet. So I went into the meeting thinking that most likely, they're going to vote to disaffiliate. And I was a little shocked that they only got 12 yes votes and 19 no votes. Oh, yes. You can come on up after one of these gentlemen. Who's going to get to the mic first?
All right, you go first.
Thank you for being back.
Thank you for having me.
You were here on just September 29th.
Yes.
And much of what you said today was repeated, or then repeated today.
That's right. There you go. I think you're on.
At the conclusion of that talk on the 29th, you said something that, I wanted to make sure I understood it. So I listened to the entire thing yesterday.
All right.
And you said, one thing you got to know, and that was the last thing recorded. So we didn't capture that.
Ah.
However...
I thought you were going to ask me to think about what I said.
Yeah, I'm going to ask you if you do remember.
Okay.
If you don't, what I wrote down, what you said is, what you need to realize is that the Bible being taught in UMC Theological Seminaries today is not the Bible you learned about in Sunday School.
That's true.
And that's stuck with me and has been eating away at me ever since.
Yes.
What does that mean?
Well, I'm glad you asked.
And I may have a follow-up.
All right, all right. When you go to seminary school, you're taught to see the Bible from a historical, critical understanding of biblical interpretation. And so a lot of things get parsed out that you definitely don't get in almost no Sunday schools. In Sunday schools, in most churches, it's taught as if this is a matter of fact. In seminaries, it's not necessarily taught that way, at least in most of our seminaries, in mainline denominations. You'll find it not strange to go to a seminary when a seminary professor might say, well, we all know the Bible's a myth, right? That's not a shocking statement to hear from a seminary professor. And then they'll explain what they mean by myth. They'll talk about there's maybe some spiritual truth in what has been said, but we don't take it literally that Jonah was swallowed by a great fish. We don't take it literally that there was a garden of Eden. We don't take it literally that so forth and so on. And so a lot of that is what you will get in most seminaries in mainline denominations, including the United Methodist Church. That's not what you most likely get in Sunday schools, am I right? You're not getting, nobody's teaching the Bible in most Sunday schools from a historical, critical method of biblical interpretation.
The problem I have is, the Sunday School, or the Bible I had in Sunday School, I was taught was inerrant, and that's the same Bible I'm using today. And my belief is, it is still inerrant. What I have a problem with is our apportements, a portion of our apportement, are funding the $27 million we give to UMC seminaries.
That's right.
With the recent appointments in the Bishop Council, the Council of Bishops, am I fair to say that it seems to be getting further progressive?
I think that's fair.
And the UMC Next advocacy group has stated that they will seek to eliminate the discriminatory language and restrictions and penalties in the discipline regarding LGBTQ persons, allowing for their full participation, marriage, and ordination. So in my mind, unlike Catherine, I don't think there's any doubt where this looks to be headed. We have a more progressive Council of Bishops. We have the UMC Next advocacy, looking to change the Book of Disciplines. And now, there are going to be at least 3,000 denominations, upwards of maybe 5,000 denominations, traditional denominations, that will be joining the Global Methodist Church before the end of this year, further weakening the traditional views within the United Methodist congregation, or the denomination. My question would be, as a traditionally-minded Methodist, what's my reason for staying in the UMC?
That's up to you to decide.
I'm asking you. What's the value proposition for the UMC for someone like me?
Well, there are a lot of great things that happen in the UMC. If you stay in the UMC, you would be one of the traditionalists that's a part of now what is a pluralistic denomination. There might be a lot of things why you value the UMC. Maybe you value the connectionalism. Maybe you value the historical continuity of the United Methodist Church. Maybe you value, even though you're traditionalist, maybe you value being in relationship with people who are centrist or progressives in their theology. Maybe you value our various structures. The United Methodist Committee on Relief, General Commission on Religion and Race, General Board of Church and Society, our missionaries. Maybe you value relationships that you've built with fellow United Methodists. And even though you have differences in interpretation of Scripture, maybe that, those relationships are something you still find valuable and you want to stay. So there could be plenty of reasons why you might want to be traditionalist, but still stay UMC.
And I hope to still honor a lot of that connection, regardless of where we go. But I thank you for being here again today.
Thank you for your questions. Thank you.
One, I just want to make a statement about Mariners. I've been here for a while, not as long as some, longer than others. But this is Mariners. What you see is Mariners Methodist Church. This is what we do over the years. And I truly believe that this is God's plan for this church. He sends us to people, He sends us to leaders, and He sends us to volunteers that we can continue to do it the right way.
Yes.
Now, I do have a question for you, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. We go through the whole process. We've dotted all our i's, crossed all our t's.
All right.
We get to the annual conference in June. They say, no, we're not going to let Mariners disinfiliate. What, do we have an alternative plan?
No.
Because evidently, we've wanted to disinfiliate. Why would we want to stay?
Well, the answer, you asked three questions, I think, there.
Right.
The first question is, I think you want to know what happens if you get the church conference vote here, but the annual conference votes no. Then that's the end of the process, and you remain United Methodist. The annual conference has the final say, if you will. Now, let me say this, and I might have said this last time I was here. If precedent means anything, if you look at the previous two years that we've had annual conference, for every church that has gone through the disaffiliation process and done all the steps that we've asked them to do, our annual conference has voted yes to allow the church to go. That doesn't mean that this annual conference, they will necessarily be of the same mind. So they could, this annual conference, the voting delegates could decide, no, we're not letting Mariners go, even though they've done everything and they've gotten the two-thirds vote, and they've gone through the discernment process. They could say no. And there have been annual conferences who have said no. You might have heard about the Arkansas Annual Conference, where a couple of churches have gone through what that conference had laid out as a process for discernment and gone through it all. And again, I don't know all the details, but the annual conference said no to three churches.
That's where the question came from, from Arkansas.
Got you, so, okay.
During my homework, I did, you know, come up with that. So, but then it's gone at annual conference. I mean, we can't appeal.
There's no appeal. Yes. Because again, it's all set based on the language and the discipline. And the language and the discipline, paragraph 2553, that talks about the Taylor Disaffiliation Plan, gives that power to the annual conferences.
Okay. You answered my question. I think we got a lot of praying to do.
All right, thank you. I know this lady right here wanted to speak. Did you still want to speak? I don't want you to miss your turn.
I just wanted to know if you knew of any reasons why people were not approved?
Oh, okay. In this conference, there hasn't been a case where anybody who's done everything that they were supposed to do was not approved at an annual conference over the last two years that we've been doing this. Now, that has been the case, just like I mentioned, in some other annual conferences, though. Yes, sir.
This feels very familiar.
Yes. Here we go again.
You asked me a question, yes. I just want to point out a couple, what I consider to be inconsistencies. And first, when someone says, I mean no disrespect to you, it's usually followed by disrespect. But on the 29th of September, we talked about the 2024 General Conference, and you couldn't predict what was going to happen there.
And I still can.
Rightfully so. But then, and again... But, then and again today, you say that no church will be forced to accept a pastor that is gay if they don't want one. So, how can you say that if you can't predict?
Well, let me clarify. What I'm saying is, and I, I think I said it when, when I was showing the PowerPoint, it is the stated goal of denominational leaders to have a pluralistic denomination, where theologically progressive, theologically centrist, and theologically traditionalist people can live under the same roof, and no one's going to be forced to go against their conscience. Now, could they go back on their word? Absolutely. They could later on down the line say, you know what? We're gonna start forcing, uh, you know, traditionalist churches to take gay pastors and to do gay weddings. They could do that, but that's not what they're saying that they want. That's not what, that's not what they're saying they want to do.
But these were the same people that were once for the protocol, who now are against the protocol.
That's right.
So, we, once again, we have inconsistencies. Much like Chris Brown's question about changing the rules, that we can't do that because of the Book of Discipline and what the annual conference has decided, yet the bishops have decided not to enforce portions of the Book of Discipline. So, we have total inconsistencies.
I agree. I'm, I don't disagree. I agree. And folks have brought that up in every meeting I've gone to. They say, well, we seem to be enforcing the discipline in some areas, and yet in other areas, we're not enforcing the discipline. And here, here's what happens is, sometimes, and, and we know this happens in every organization, and it happens in societies, and it happens in governments, you might have a stated rule, right? And certain individuals who are elected to certain positions of leadership are supposed to follow those rules. However, if there is no check on their power, if, or if there is no way to make them follow the rules, they might be able to break the rules and get away with it.
I have one final comment, and that is, I have friends in other annual conferences who are living by totally different rules that have been, that have been enforced by their district's superintendents. And I wanna thank you for giving us what I consider to be an open and honest and fair consideration.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much, Dr. Archie.
Thank you. And thank you again for our dialogue that we had last time. I, I thought you and I together helped to lay things out nicely for the congregation. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Archie. I'm Jack O'Day, for those who don't know me. I've, it's dangerous to jump to conclusions, but I came to a conclusion here, listening to what was being said, that not every annual conference has the same process for disaffiliation. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Then my question is, since we're a United Methodist Church, why is that happening?
Because the language and the discipline that was passed in 2019 gave annual conferences discretion.
Well, if they have discretion, going back to Chris's problem with the absentee ballots, then you still have an opportunity for the trustees to change their mind about that.
And they certainly could, if they would like to.
Well, we would like for you to convey to them, we would like them to change that policy. And, and I, and I think if enough churches said that, then maybe they might.
I will share your thoughts with them. And, and I do, by the way, when I go to congregations. And, and I've got two more meetings after this today, by the way. Y'all praying for me, right? And every weekend up until May, pretty much. And so, I do take back to the Conference Board of Trustees what I'm hearing from people who are members of congregations.
And, you know, our situation here is somewhat unique. And many Methodist churches have a fairly large number of people who go to Florida in the winter.
Yeah.
And, you know, are they gonna pay for airfare to fly back to take a vote? Probably not. So, it certainly influences the outcome, and we don't really get a fair outcome.
I understand. I understand your thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes. We, we do have to get that vote in before annual conference, though. Annual conference is in June, um, and for reasons that we have to process and, and put these resolutions before the annual conference delegates, we need to get everything in by the end of May, pretty much. So, we could talk about if, if somehow, you know, you thought it was better to postpone what we have already scheduled to a little bit later date. But again, you, you have to get it in before the end of May.
I don't know if we're represent, how, to what degree we are representative of this congregation. If, if we are the only couple that are gonna be in Florida on, you know, on March the 14th, but I would bet that we, there probably are a significant number of couples or people who can't be here. But how do we determine that between now and, and March? To, this, the idea of postponing it to April. It would be unfair for me to, just because the wife and I aren't gonna be here, if we're the only couple not being able to be present, that's not fair for the rest of the congregation. Is there, is there some way that we can determine how many active members cannot be here on March 14th to make that determination, to set it back to April?
Well, you have time to, to try to figure that out, and, and I'm assuming that, that there's enough people who would be away, that it, it seems to be a significant issue for a number of people that, because a number of people have raised that. Again, it doesn't have to be what we set. I'm, I'm just, I'm setting it because I've got a tight schedule with all these churches that wanna disaffiliate. But if you need to push it back to May, if you think that's in the best interest of this congregation, then we can negotiate a, a date in May. That's not out of the question.
Could, could, could I just ask for a show of hands of how many people would be, uh, would, would not be willing to change the date, that insist on having it on that date? How many people are willing, you, you're not willing to change? How many are willing to make it later, April or whatever? Well, it, it, it doesn't appear to be overwhelming.
Well, let me, let me, let me prove, let me ask this, then. How about you all discuss it in, in some official way, in some, and, and that way you can determine, and then your pastor can let me know if, if you would like to change the date to something a little later? The end of May. The end of May. You, you have to have your church conference before the end of May because we need to be, because early June is the annual conference, June 8th through 10th. And we need time to prepare documentation. We need time to let everyone who's going to be a voting delegate know what we're voting on, all the resolutions. And this would be a resolution to allow Mariners Bethel to disaffiliate from the United Methodist Church. And so, by the end of May, you have to have your church conference. But that gives you some, a little more time to work with. If that, if that's more beneficial, I'm willing to be flexible and change it. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Chris Muenwiler. I'm not a member yet, but I'm going through the process. Two things. One, you just made the statement about how we teach children in Sunday School versus what they're teaching in the seminary. And the seminary says it's not literal that Jonah ended up in a fish, that the Garden of Eden was not real, and stuff. And I believe in the, in the, in the King James Version. And Revelation 22, 18 through 21. For I testify unto every man that heareth the words of the prophecy of this book. If any man shall change or shall add unto these things, God shall add unto him the plagues that are written in this book. And if any man shall take away from the words of this book, of this prophecy, God shall take away his part out of this, the book of life, and out of the Holy City, and from the things from which are written in this book. He which testifyeth these things saith, surely I come quickly. Amen. Even so, Lord Jesus, the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ be with you all. Amen. This is truth. All of this politically correct nonsense is not truth.
That's why we have a split in the denomination. There are folks who see the words of Scripture more literally and, and take it in that way, and there are others within the same denomination who, uh, I guess probably the best word would be to say, they, they interpret things very differently. So, we could argue all day about biblical interpretation. Even within this church, I'm sure that there are people who have various interpretations on any words of Scripture, right? There are a whole lot of things in Scripture that it's literal, but you say, okay, well, how do we interpret it? Suffer not a woman to preach in the church, to teach in the church. Well, okay. Any woman ever prayed without your head covered in the church? Any woman here guilty of praying without your head covered? Alright. I know some folks in other denominations, some of my Pentecostal friends will, the way they interpret Scripture, they say, if you have not spoken in other tongues, then there's no confirmation of your salvation, the way they understand Scripture. Anybody here think they're saved but do not speak in tongues? Anybody not, I don't speak in tongues, but I still think I'm saved? I know some Pentecostals who would disagree with you based on their interpretation of Scripture. We can go on and on. That, that, but thank you for sharing. I, I just wanted to prove a, a point theologically. One reason we have so many denominations is because we're in the same denomination. Pastor Becky and I, we're in Bible study together. We get into an argument, and she said, well, I don't agree with you. I'm going off and start my own denomination. I don't wanna be in fellowship with you anymore, 'cause you're in error. And now, we have another new denomination, right? So, that, I mean, so this is an age-old problem in the church, if you will, where you have various interpretations of Scripture. I have some Presbyterian friends, by the way, who say, our form of church government is unbiblical. Anybody got any Presbyterian friends who ever tell you that? Because we don't always have a plurality of elders in the church. We have this one pastor who, who kinda runs everything in our church, and they say, well, that, that's not biblical. So, again, you can look, you can parse out all those Scriptures so many different ways. Where are you next, sir? Come on up.
Oh, why not?
Why not?
I just wanna make sure I understand something. We know that because of, of the way this church is populated, we have a lot of people who are away. Okay? And we'll be, you've heard that many times. And in order to change this rule where everybody has to be present, who has to do that?
Only the Conference Board of Trustees can change that rule, if they decide they want to change the rule.
Okay. And the way I hear, hear you say it, in order to change that rule, they have to meet and, and change it, if they wanted to change it. But this is 2023, and electronic voting is very widespread. Okay? So, why can't you go to those people, explain the situation, and say, it is not just and fair for this church to have to go? And, I mean, everybody has proxy voting, electronic, electronic voting is very, very secure. Okay? So, so why can't you go back to them and say, you know, we, we need to change this rule because we are not getting a just and fair answer?
Well, I have shared, again, I have, I've talked to various congregations who, for some, this is an issue, and, and they, they'd like to see it different. But, again, it's, it's their decision. They, and they, they might decide, no, that opens up, for whatever reason, makes things more problematic than they would like it to be. So, I can certainly take it back to them, um, and I have. I have shared with them. I continue to share with them. Uh, again, being the administrator of the process, as a DS, I share with them what I'm experiencing in meetings like this. But, again, it's, it's their decision to make. And not that they won't listen to me, but they might decide, we've heard you, but we think we wanna stay with the way we're doing things now.
Okay. It just doesn't seem, seem right.
I understand.
Alright, I'll keep it short. 20 minutes. I, I just gotta ask, what do you do in your free time?
Free time? What's that?
Anyway.
I hang out with my daughter and I and my wife, April, and, and complain about the church.
No! I just wanna, on top, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Incredible.
Thank you.
And I also wanna thank the man sitting over there, Dennis, and our pastor, Becky, for the job they've done here. And we could sit here and talk for another hour and go down the rabbit hole of voting when and all that, but let's leave it up to the people at, at this church have been working on this. And there's a reason. There's a plan. And you compliment, we are prepared.
Yes. More prepared than any other church in this conference.
At the pros and cons, and be in discussion with you of moving it back, if we can.
Yeah.
Because there's more than just moving it back. There's a lot of other machinations that go into moving it back.
Yes.
And so, we need to be prepared for that. You know, this isn't just a, you know, oh, let's go. We gotta think it through, as we've done all along.
Yes.
So, again, hats off to Dennis, Becky, all they've done, and the rest of the people that are involved with whatever committee is doing that. I'm not really aware of that, but, and yourself. And if we can move it back, and it's in the best interest of all involved, we'll do it.
Yes.
Because we could sit here and talk for, for another 45 minutes.
That's right.
We can't do anything today.
I can be flexible, and you heard that from me. So, thank you for that. So, we, you know, if, if you gotta do it another time, so be it. I gotta go, 'cause I gotta get to another church to have the same discussion. But, thank you for being here. Again, my intent was to help you understand the process. Thank you all. When I come back again after the forum, we can talk more theology. If you wanna talk theology, I'd be glad to talk theology all day long with you. Thank you, Pastor Becky. Thank you, officers of this church. Thank you to all the members of the church. God bless you.